Town Council meeting for May 11th. Please come to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item two is public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of prior minutes.
I move just a minute of approval from seven, two thousand and fifteen. We present.
Any corrections, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Item four, our appointments for the Lake Willamette Authority Marine Patrol as requested by the chair. As listed, Karen Brooks, Matthew Donadeo, Sean Flynn, John Pulezi, Devin Quintard, and Christopher Rizano. All in favor?
Aye.
Earlier tonight, there were a bunch of us out front taking some pictures with these little clown noses. A previous councilman had mentioned it to me from Walmart, or Wal-Mart, sorry, Walgreens, and it was to raise awareness for children in poverty. And it's very similar to the ALS where they were dumping the water over people, but this is no water, and you got a cool nose to bring attention to it. I had a couple more in the office. And they have a whole bunch of suggestions on ways you can help raise money and raise awareness so that people are thinking about that when they're making decisions every day. So if, the reason that I'm mentioning it tonight is May 21st is when they're going to end the campaign. Not that I don't think they wouldn't take money after that, but they're trying to raise five million dollars. And so they have a whole bunch of things like, you know, not swearing, not talking, bake sales, dress ups. Did I give one to everybody? I don't know what I wanted to say. And just a variety of things that Walgreens is promoting, and they have a whole bunch of sponsors that are also helping. So if everyone would just take a look at that, I thought it like it was a little, kind of a fun, a fun idea here. So, and we're happy, it says, "Take a selfie, throw yourself on Facebook to bring awareness." So, it'll be kind of fun. The other was, in Century Brass, this Saturday, the bids are going to go out as advertised, May 16th and Monday, in the Hartford Current and the News Times, also the state's approval list with bidders. And then, anyone interested in bidding will be required to do a mandatory walkthrough on May 26th, and we expect the bids back by June 18th. And then, we would be awarding the bids and starting that project. So we'll keep you guys apprised, so if you want to be there, we can all... June 18th is when the bids are due back, and so sometime after that, they'd be staging and getting ready to take the building down.
That?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a timeline for the completion?
Well, we wanted to have it down by the end of the summer, or in the fall sometime. But we also have the brass box that was buried over there when it was, was Scoville's. So it'll have all kinds of stuff in there. So we're thinking of, gonna make it a to-do, since we've all been hearing the word Century Brass for so long.
It was Scoville's for a lot, lot longer than it was Century Brass. Scoville's only came, or Century Brass only came in, in the last few years they were bought out, but Scoville's goes back to the turn of the century.
Well, it's the Scoville's brass box with all the stuff that they put in there. And we haven't opened it or anything, but we did get the box, because once it was discovered, we couldn't have anyone who's got a good thing.
Thank you, Mayor. Any requests for the bids, was there certain pervig that was required from the state pertaining to their portion of paying for the demolition of the, of the building?
No, not with regard to the bids, because we have the grant, that, we already have all that paperwork. And this is working with that team with regard to expending those funds. So that's connected.
Right, so then, a request for the demolition, I didn't want any specific...
No, but part of the things that the state reviewed wasn't just the engineering of taking the structure down, but also the environmental concerns while you're taking the structure down. So that's built right into that, and that had to be approved by the DEEP and their environmental engineers at this level, and then also the EPA took a swipe at it because they have interest in that monitoring and everything of that property. So it had everybody involved, which is why it took about a week and a half longer than I wanted. But we want to get it right. And I handed out just a little update, a card on the, a community conversation with the New Milford Substance Abuse Council. Item seven is executive session with just a short update.
Shalom.
And we will invite in Al Chasin. Did you need anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Executive session, and no motions were made, no votes were taken. And item eight is with regard to personnel. Pete?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the town council to approve the attached resolution amendment section four point three, part B, of the up speed dispatch of Teamster and Ask the Pension Plan. It's the Town of Milford County Pension Plan Summary of Plan Changes. The Town of Milford County Pension Plan referred to as the plan applies to plan members who are FC, dispatchers, and Teamsters and Ask members who are not employed by the Bureau of Education as recently in amendment effect of July 1, 2014, the rule of eighty-four set forth with definition of early retirement date. The summary of plan provisions is modified to require that a non-library Ask member who did not have at least fifteen years of service on July 1, 2014 must be at least age fifty-eight as a severance from employment, and his age and years of service must total at least eighty-four as a severance from employment in order to be treated as meeting the rule of eighty-four.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Nine is the police department to accept the donation of a memorial plaque. Is there any dis, uh, motion?
To move. Second.
And Bill, you're gonna...
I actually, I, I have a couple of the plaques, or only a set of seven. We have, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had a Kenneth Koch plaque that was just a little white and white photo. And we upgraded that quite a bit. And we also have one that has all the patches dating back to nineteen fifty.
Which one?
Which one?
Is it this one?
This one right here.
Nineteen fifty?
I remember them. Okay.
Oh. I can remember it.
I have, I have more of all the other ones.
You must have had too much to know about.
So are they preserved of them plaques?
They are.
Okay.
Yes, they are glued. We happen to be at the police department, uh, working on our new monument. Uh, we hope that you can all join us for Friday for your, to the ceremony, if you can. We are there twenty-four seven. Please stop by at any time. You can see it, it's a very, very nice thing. Public Works did a phenomenal job helping us put it all together. We will have the whole collection of these plaques and photographs up in the lobby, so stop there if you need to.
And Katie?
Uh, Bill, I was asked by someone about this, because it was in the paper all the time, saying, "Come." I'm just curious, you know, where would people park their cards if they were going to come to this ceremony?
Come to the police department, we will make parking arrangements. Um, we are going to make sure all of our personnel all park closely for that.
Ah, thank you.
We will make sure they're in place.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thanks, Bill, a little break. Item ten is with the Economic Development Department with regard to some suggestions and ideas that people had. So Luigi and Randy has been involved with this, and the tax assessor also has been briefed, and she couldn't be here this evening, so she's gone.
Pardon me, Mayor, and I'm just a councilor, here because to discuss proposal, provisions to tax ordinance. Really, our goal is to try and utilize the tools that we have and look to other tools that we may need to promote business in town and create a competitive economy for the future of New Milford. As many of you are already aware, there was a tax deferral ordinance in place that dates back to two thousand and three, really hasn't been utilized, and we wanted to propose changes to that, that will make it more workable, more competitive, and allow us to promote that as a tool, certainly not just for businesses who retain in New Milford that are embarking on expansions and job growth, but as a tool that we can go out and approach businesses with, that we can specifically say what we have to offer and the process for carrying it through. I'd say, although we did want to reinvent the entire program, we have made two principal changes, one in terms of the use, uses that are eligible, we made that more broad. We want to see that, that would be expanded for IT, digital media, healthcare, biotech, clean energy. It was very narrowly defined previously, and we didn't want to have any issues with that. In addition to that, you'll notice in nineteen dash forty-seven, the offer has been revised, so clearly that is important. We, we changed basically the structure over, from, basically any cost of improvement from a hundred thousand to just under three million. It's a three-year benefit. We've done this, we created this after analysis of programs throughout the state. There's communities in every county, large, small, urban, rural, that have these programs, and we tried to make something that was competitive, but that was responsible in terms of future tax revenue that the Town of Milford will receive. The one exception would be any projects over three million, but we added a fourth and fifth year. We felt that in cases where there's larger economic traffic and growth and economic runoff, that that could result in a greater benefit. We structured it in that way with a sliding scale, because certainly they would be bearing the costs upfront, and then the percentage would be reduced by five years each year thereafter.
So we do have a couple of questions here.
Sure.
Joe?
I have a few. First is right on page one for nineteen forty-five A, two, retail, and it, this is, I ask this because of my, my, my simple country upbringing. Would you explain to me what that means? Because I don't understand it. Retail, restaurant, or mixed use, including retail, a restaurant, or at least one you use locally solely within the Village District? Even as an attorney, I can figure it out, and I'll explain it to you.
Uh, so essentially, retail, restaurant, mixed use, including, so they're basically saying, retail, restaurant alone in a commercial building, or mixed use that includes both in the Village Center is eligible. Outside the Village Center zone, for this tax incentive program, those uses are not eligible based on what's...
So, I want to put it really in extra, uh, up on two oh two. It's not going to be eligible?
Not based on that, no.
Well, we're expanding it, but we're not expanding it.
Well, it, it depends on the community you look at. So you'll often, you'll see some communities that would take retail, restaurant, and allow the whole community to be eligible. It really depends on what your wants and needs are. In this case, we've looked at a history of businesses or potential investors coming in, looking at Seven or other places in two oh two because of the traffic count, and they view those as places where they want to invest already. We've seen challenges in the downtown over the years if they get storefronts, so that was included as a tool of investment like that.
How many restaurants do we have in New Milford off, off the Village Center District?
Offhand, I'm not specific.
How many do we have in the middle of the Village Center District?
I, I don't...
So the people who want to bring restaurants into this town and don't want to be in the Village District, who want to be on the corridors more heavily traveled, would not have that incentive to, the significant incentive?
Not a...
Because a restaurant isn't going to spend three million bucks on it if you want to put it in this place?
Yeah.
So you're out of luck. All right, that's, all right, so that's...
Well, that, I mean, just based on what that's written, there's, obviously this can be changed, we're having the discussion tonight.
We don't expect a vote tonight, Joe, or either this, or that everybody...
That's why I have these questions. Uh, next, and I, yours, all yours, Frank? Maybe there was somebody before me.
There is, there is somebody before you, Frank.
What do we tell a homeowner who, who doesn't get a tax deference? I'm here eleven years, eleven years my taxes have gone up, eleven years. I don't get any benefit, I don't get any tax deference. What do we tell them when we're, we're wanting to give away this tax deference? And adding into that, we've had this in, in place in New Milford since two thousand and three. In fact, it has been used to, in a completely, or a disaster for the town on a large building investment just north of here. So what do we tell our homeowners?
Well, I'd start with the second first. Actually, speaking of the tax assessment, this was never used. That was a separate deal made outside of this ordinance, which we still have the ability to do. If it was a major project or one that we really felt as a community that we benefit, we could work outside of this arrangement. That was the case with the deal you're referring to. Clearly, anytime you have to address constituents, which certainly I do on a regular basis, I would say it's an economic development tool that's used nationally, five to ten billion dollars annually in local tax incentives are provided to companies for observation. We use it because we feel it, if used, used and designed properly, that it can be something that promotes long-term economic growth. Certainly, it needs to be shaped in a way that fits the community. I think that if managed responsibly, it, it will be a benefit to both existing companies that are growing, and we want to keep it in common, so they can support challenging investment that will then hopefully offset that homeowner's tax bill and keep the community vibrant. So certainly, I could see how homeowners would have concerns if they're not getting the benefit, and they want the tax revenue used, to be used appropriately. But it's even more important, as you look at the economic development, economic development landscape with the Connecticut State Budget, that it's really local tax policy that's probably more important than ever in terms of how you can retain attractive companies. You'll see that statewide with tax increment financing legislation and some of the initiatives that local economic developments and state groups have proposed, because really, we do have an ability to impact two states if it comes. It's not certainly the only factor, but I, I try and touch on, sorry for the long answer, but touch on some of those points and the benefits of what we're trying to accomplish to help offset the, the tax.
I, I, I'll pass on this last comment. I'd really like to know the number of restaurants we have outside the Village Center District. I know that at least two brand new ones have opened in the last couple of months.
Yeah.
And they would get no incentive. So, yeah, we want to bring in, but, you know, are, are we being so selective? I don't know, I got problems with it, but it's, it's, you know, we'll, we'll continue the conversation. Thank you.
In some communities, they don't allow them to any restaurants at all also, because restaurants are so volatile.
But that seems to be one of the biggest investments we're giving in this town right now. Wouldn't you like the style of restaurant it is, or is not? Be nice to know, we're, we're actually becoming a location to come have dinner, and, and, and there's several really nice new ones in this town. And yet, we may not give incentives to restaurants, but we want to give them, in the one spot.
Some of the examples you mentioned, I can think were specifically why they weren't included, because there are making investments in the current seven, and we've seen demand there. So we're trying to incentivize areas where we're just not seeing it, and we might need that incentive to make a deal more favorable and, you know, certainly won't be the only factor in opening a restaurant, but that's exactly why we try to structure it like this.
Thank you, Beth.
Uh, one of the concerns I have, it's definitely in reference to what Joe referred to, the previous deal that we had made, and saw no benefit from. What teeth do we have on this to enforce? I know that they would be responsible for the tax burden, but beyond that, what penalty do they have for not making those improvements? And also, what safeguards do we have in place to ensure that they did make them? Even if they provide you receipts, do we do inspections? What follow-up do we do?
Well, there is a process as outlined. I'm also legally going to refer to Randy with any of the, in terms, but the tax assessor will be reviewing the investments made, that the, the improvements were carried out, and certainly, it's not going to offer a tax benefit if somebody doesn't fall through this, on this project. Legally, I would defer to Randy, but, but there will be a legal agreement in place, my understanding, that would allow us to, uh...
Can we do onsite inspections?
Yes, we could do that, I think, based on its use. That would be a reasonable isolation, at least that's what we've got on this side as well.
Further to that, since your last attempt at this, there is a statute, section twelve dash sixty-five C, it's in charge. And under that statute, the town, through the town council, through its mayor, has, provided the town council through its mayor, has to, is enabled to create a, an agreement, a written agreement, which contains whatever he or she negotiates. And the reality is that this has come about because there were so many attempts at trying to reboot the economy and deferrals for granted in the past. And it was very difficult to get anybody to agree to anything if they were going to invest anything in any town at that point. So the reality is that we have a statute now with some teeth in it that would be negotiated, terms and conditions of which would be negotiated. And, and can be, can, some teeth can be added to it. You need to understand that this is a revision of an existing deferral ordinance. You already have this ordinance on the books. What's, what's been done, it's, it's been, it's been revised in order to incentivize for the center of the town. And also, what it does is, the way it's drawn now is that the town council, as I told you in the past, only the town council can really abate, this is an abatement, and it's an abatement of assessment, that's what it is. Only the town council can do that. So what, it's, it's not something that's going to be taken from the town council's hands. The assessor will collect the information, the assessor will determine and make, and make a recommendation to the town council as to whether or not this business qualifies. But it's up to the town council to, to, to make the decision as to give the deferral.
I guess part of my other concern too, though, is they'll say that they're going to do this, and maybe in good faith they thought that they would, and then something happens, or it just falls through the cracks.
Then it should be revoked, you should, there should be a revocation provision right within the four corners of the twelve dash sixty-five C agreement.
Okay. But can we also assess a penalty, or is it just...
Section twelve dash sixty-five C is in charge.
Can we attach an inconvenience or a...
Well, you can't, you can't do a, what's known as a retroactive tax.
Right.
If it's going to be construed by a court as a retroactive tax, as some of us know, you, you can't impose a tax backwards, that's what, that's what King George did. So, so that, that is not something that...
No, there was more of a penalty, it's a title fee.
By the way, government, government Lloyd did that too.
Right.
But, but there was already a tax in place at that point. So, the fact is, is that there's no statutory authority to go back and say, "Well, you know what? We're going to impose a tax." What you might be able to do, I don't research the issue, because I haven't been asked to. Under twelve dash sixty-five C's, you might be able to revoke the agreement retroactively so that that tax becomes due.
Would they be late then, and you could charge them?
Then I would say that you would do would be the links.
Okay.
Because it's a breach of the contract, and it could be a liquidated, it's, it's, I don't want to get into technicality with the liquidated damages, but it could be a liquidated damage provision of the contract. It's kind of a definite draw. I mean, this has got to be a contract that's drawn correctly by not, by somebody, by a lawyer, not by somebody who thinks that they, they could do this.
Yeah, I have one more thing, but I wanted to ask if you would speak on that.
I sort of piggyback on this. So in other words, as you, as you're stating, final approval is with the town council, yes, this is the event of a large development, it's going to go through the land use process, get approvals, and then has to land on us, and we would be part of that process.
In some projects, they'd want to come to you first.
Actually, they'd come here first. That's what I'm asking. They would likely come to you, come to the, to the council first. Or come, and it would be by way of, of meetings with the assessor, with the, with the, with the mayor, and trying to carve or craft something, and then come to the town council. Because the town council, they know, it's not going to want to fool around with designing somebody else's deferral unless it was directed by the town, because the contract has them on. So there's a process, and it can be done in a, in a, in a really, if it's done, if it's done with good guidance, developers, those with good guidance, it can be done in a very quick manner.
At times.
Yes.
So then, my only other concern, well, I'd be, sorry, the other concern I had was just this now burden, an additional burden on the tax assessor, so she's going to have to go out and do inspections and ensure that they are doing those improvements.
Well, actually, no. Don't forget, you can have, you can have reporting requirements by the developer right within your contract, saying that, that, uh, you can put a timetable in it, you can say that the permits have to be issued by such and such a date, but the reporting has to come to the town, to the town council, that's the whole legislative body. That's not somebody who they could say, you know, they could schmooze, it's somebody with the whole legislative body. On time and matter, you can require this all in this contract now, because there's a contract, right? You have a right to, to actually do a contract. And if somebody wants to get to you by half and say that they're going to negotiate this, then the deferral's not in part. Supposed to be for the benefit of the Town of Milford, and it's supposed to be a joint benefit, not supposed to be somebody that puts their hand in our pocket.
And then, but we still have the right now to offer an abatement and stuff?
Yes, yes. Again, you have to make a fine, you could, you take a look at section nineteen dash forty-five, the first section of the, of the, of the ordinance, there's a, there's a, a list of criteria that the town council considers. The last one, it's, it's almost subjective. I'm just getting, for different reasons, but you can see, you can see it's, it's subjective, it's subjective. So there's, there's an issue that, that allows you to hang your hat on something, should you say this is not going to work.
And the ordinance as it exists?
Right.
Is a little different?
Yes, the ordinance as it exists is different. We want this, we want the, to be truthful with people. And it also, it's also, it's more defined now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Am I, any, any more legal question?
I have one. Sit down for a minute. Yeah, how's it? Put your feet down. Luigi?
Yes.
And this is probably for Randy to hear, so, you know, you two can talk about it, but one, some of my questions were already answered, and I start with you. The downtown, a lot of the spaces that are available for these restaurants and/or mixed use retail, which will be allowed only in the Village Center District, are they for sale, or are they owned and for rent? Let me, off the top of your head, what would you say?
Of, of what's available, it depends.
Yeah, if I wanted to come to town and I'm hoping to start really...
I would say most of the space downtown is, is for lease.
For lease? So it's already owned by someone who's paying tax on it?
Yes.
So are we not excluding some potentials? I realize that it, as we, what you said before is a valid point, that people are looking at the corridor as the attractive place to places already open, but, but there are fewer places that are leased, aren't there more places for sale with wings than in the center?
Well, I think, what, what is...
So we're giving an abatement for, for renovation rather than for actual ongoing taxes?
Yes, this isn't a new investment in the town, I mean, yes, it's not taking anything away that's existing, or just real property for me.
I just wanted to clarify that now. My other comment was that the D on nineteen dash forty-five is that the property not be delinquent payment taxes over the town, and from some past history and other commissions here, if history of a person, rather than just what they happen to owe now, I mean, perhaps in another town, perhaps they started a, a building somewhere else and walked away. I think that that is to, you know, maybe this area, but that that pervig needs to be a little bit tighter, because what you might owe today, I think we all learned that you're welcome with that, as, as, you mean you're good prospect. And along with C, that sufficient evidence is, is a very, very broad term, and I realize that our tax assessor will go and look, but Beth even pointed out that, you know, sometimes things do fall through track, cracks, and you don't, you can't just count on that, you know, again, I'll say, sometimes you don't know enough to know what to ask, and if somebody wants to schmooze, you know, when you're on site, this is affidavit, I think it's very important that you never come close to having the situation that happened to you past. I realize this is meant to take care of that. But for the taxpayers in this town, it's, it sticks in their product. in their product that someone got something that they really shouldn't have and never reviewed. And then you go to the table there, 19-47, you said that this was in line, and has researched other towns and things in our area in this state?
Yes, there's some in this area, but really, not every town in this area has that. New Towns, Towns has.
How about in other states, how about in our bordering states? Because sometimes, you know, people aren't just going to look at Beppo, Brookfield, or Milford, or Ridgefield, they might say, you know, what about the Ballin', what about Peg Town you want to mention? Have you done any work in that area?
Yeah, in the past, we have. The economic development in local tax structure in terms of incentives, my experience is quite different in terms of what's available, so I really don't think it was as much of an apple-to-apples comparison in terms of local property, we did also account for county and other taxes.
Right, right.
But we certainly did take that into consideration. We did look at towns, I mean, we have, at our challenges, where companies have relocated to other parts of the state, and I don't know if this played a role in that, or if they ever pursued incentives, but in every case that I was aware of, they did have tax incentive policies in place in those little towns.
And just my last question is, do you have a sense of how, if anybody was considering coming to Milford, but then did not, because they did not feel our incentive program or payment program was worth it?
I can't say that that's been one specific factor, but...
Not necessarily, but in general?
I think often, anytime we have a conversation with a company, whether it is a smaller business, or one that's maybe existing and growing, it often comes up, what's available. Certainly, not every business that's eligible is more of the ownership's decision. There's a lot of companies that decide for other reasons not to pursue it, but it does come up quite often, what's available, and can they access it, what's the eligibility for it? Just because the landscape is one of which, where they know it's out there in other states, they're probably getting phone calls from other states as well.
Was Oxford one of the towns you happened to...
Yeah, Oxford historically has had an abatement, yes. That was one, really...
And is this in line, would you say, with...
Well, largely, yes. We looked at Oxford as one, Middlebury has one, Trumbull, Newtown, they can all vary different in terms of years, the benefit, eligibility, but we've really taken a look at, at every one we could find that's been available, largely online, but in the past also through CCM, if that's...
Thank you. Randy, one of the things that Katie mentioned, could that be phrase, the language, much like the purchasing authority language with regard to responsible, the word responsible somewhere in here, which allows you the flexibility to make sure that you value that good reputation or not of a company, much like the MNO situation, where you know them to be timely, you know them to be paying taxes on all their other properties, you know them...
Sure, I can think of that. Yeah, responsibly carry out the obligation to any municipality or...
So we have that word in there, and that gives the council a little bit more...
As determined in the discretion of the town. Got it, yeah.
Okay. There you go, thanks.
Thank you.
Immediately did you think of that one. Frank?
Yeah, Randy, the property is available, the person wants to come in and build a restaurant, goes with the town assessor, everything is aligned, and they qualify, and there are all the conditions, they go to town council, and the council says, no. Do they have appeal process?
No, they do not. This is not a matter of right. This is a matter of the grace of the legislature by...
So they can't complain that we did it to John, but we're not doing it to me, you're discriminating?
They could, but whether or not that's, I mean, that's, when you take a look at the way this is drafted, and the way it was drafted, actually, well, before we have that set, town council has, it's the legislative body, they have a broad discretion, and the statute, the town council is the only entity, the legislative body is the only entity that can abate taxes, that's a big power. So it's not, it's not a matter of right.
Okay, and Luigi, you said mixed use, when you referred to restaurants and pavillati, but doesn't mixed use also imply residential?
Yes, yes, it does.
So if they wanted to buy a building and renovate it and include rental apartments on the second floor, that would be covered in the exemption?
Or construct.
I think we would want to do that, because we definitely want good apartments in the downtown area, so I want to make sure that that's not excluded.
I would hope this would encourage some growth in that, especially second floors, particularly down the street where Spectrum is, you know, areas that we could, we could go second floor on. I have a question for you, can I jump, can I step on somebody?
You, yeah, you're about three away.
All right, go.
Frank, you're...
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Pete, did you want to let Tom go as well?
Sure. My only question is, when we've put this together finally, how are we going to promote this? How are we going to get this message out and really make it ring, so that we're not just one and a bunch, that we can stand out?
I think, as starting point, we want to use existing shares, where new development comes in, largely through local offices, through zoning, weapons, the Chamber of Commons, our Development Services team, that people reach out to, myself. So without a doubt, immediately, we want to work, the Commercial Brokers Alliance of Western Connecticut, that really probably covers, I would say, ninety-five percent of the real estate in Milford, our bankers, and some of our stakeholders, whether it be a nonprofit corporation, commission, or other groups, immediately. We certainly want to send that to each of the regional publications, whether it be New Towns, New Milford, Spectrum, Litchfield County Times, to promote that we have something new, and we certainly would want it presented as a new tool that we can utilize to try to attract some interest.
Thank you. Mayor Jane, what type of healthcare business are you looking to bring in?
We left that a bit broad. You know, it could be, you know, a healthcare startup, it could be medical offices that are, a small medical practice that's going out on its own, maybe a specialty group, I guess, it depends, I think we left it broad, possibly intentionally, to be able to attract companies up here. I think it could encompass a lot, and by no means a healthcare expert would look at some other eligible definitions that have included healthcare as one, so. I don't know if that, it probably isn't a great specific answer to a question.
I mean, are you talking like an SNF, or...
SNF.
Still nursing, still...
I think we probably include, include that. You know, certainly, we have quite a few nursing jobs and companies in town, so I would say we would include that.
One other question, is medicine still, still receiving any victims?
No, to my knowledge, that expired, Luigi's a year ago, huh?
A year ago. And any other questions, Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Ray, glad to see you back.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you.
Quick question for you, quickly, not pulling you to true numbers, but what do you think the ratio is between what the residential homeowner pays and the commercial, the break out, what our ratio is?
Twenty-three.
As a total of the tax, five over, seven, eighty, twenty?
An eighty would be the residential homeowner.
Yeah.
So for every dollar that we spend, the residential homeowner pays eighty cents, and the commercial pays twenty cents. So would it be, in your opinion, if we increased the commercial sector, the ratio by ten percent, let's just say, and we went to seventy, thirty, with the increase that we have in operating costs, right, that we have every year, if we can lessen the ratio for the impact on the homeowner versus, and then apply it towards the commercial sector, wouldn't that be a savings to our residential taxpayer?
How would you do that?
If you grow the revenue, if you grow the commercial base. So if you grow that, so if the ratio...
Yeah, if you grow the commercial base, that's what it's based on, assessing the commercial base and assessing the retail base, so it's high, so...
Thank you, Ray. Luigi, a couple of questions that I have first, as I also see, you know, we did talk about number three, which is the retail. Couple of things that I'd like to talk about is, the opportunity for manufacturing, distribution, is located solely outside of the village. Can you kind of expound a little bit about what this opportunity with, you know, would this be something that a manufacturing company would take advantage of, a distribution company?
Yes, yeah, that was originally what the existing ordinance included, it was really specific to manufacturing, distribution. That wouldn't change. We would certainly expect that our existing manufacturers, in like a new one, would be interested in that program.
And you're going out and visiting companies both locally, and then when you're up in the water bear area, with our regional, our regional COGS, is it your thought process that a lot of city, like a lot of towns, let's say Danbury, Oxford, other areas are really incentivizing these companies that are already in Connecticut or outside of Connecticut, to come to their town?
It really varies. It depends on the competitive advantage of the town and the position they're in. Some towns really aren't, don't feel they're in the need to, some of it, there's other factors, such as, you know, local, you know, political beliefs that would structure that, but largely speaking, urban areas have them, some of which is subsidized by the state through urban jobs and enterprise zone programs. I'd say, most communities that feel that they need to be more proactive, that they might not have the competitive advantages of some neighboring communities for a variety of reasons, they try and use that as a tool to maybe offset some of those gaps or challenges. Certainly, a site that, a bad site, this tool is not going to change a bad site, or if certain other criteria is not aligned with the, with what a company needs are, this is not going to change it, but this certainly could help make a decision, and, you know, in discussions with companies, they've shown us the cost differential in other places, in other states, and what potentials they could, and it does have an impact initially.
And going into number three, where we're talking about information technology, digital media, healthcare, bio, technology, clean energy, this can also be something to be piggybacked on, whether it be a state awarded grant, or federal grant, these are all things that can be piggybacked on, one another, correct?
Yes, this wouldn't prevent us from, you know, any incentive opportunities, really on the state level, really, in many deals, you would see a layering of incentives, or, you know, other opportunities where the state works in conjunction with the municipality to make a deal out of it.
Great, I'll defer for now there.
Thank you. Katie?
No, my question's answered.
Oh, good. Any other questions? Joe?
I don't have 1945 in front of me, but the current version, do we allow for abatements for manufacturing and distribution outside of the Village Center currently?
Yes.
So...
It's different structure, not the same benefit.
Not the same benefit, so we're already doing it, still not bringing it in to town. The other part is, is scale here, somebody looks for three million in, we're not going to really see our taxes from that for six years out, and fifty percent first year and five years out.
You still get property tax, but not the improvement tax?
Not the improvements, and however we agree that anybody comes in, puts that kind of improvement in, will need efficient roads, well-paved roads, additional fire police, all these protections that will provide anyhow additional cost to us as a town that we're going to eat for at least six years.
I think it depends on the case, I mean, if it's an existing expansion, a lot, more infill opportunities, a lot of infrastructures are already going to be there. You know, certainly, there could be potential costs with any new development on local resources, there's no question. You know, we, we're looking for long-term economic impact and investment from firms that are committed to Milford, and that's what we feel this provides. Definitely, you know, understanding the concerns about extending it, maybe to additional years, I think that's something for the council's consideration. It could always be done for three years, and then we feel, we assess the use of it, or the potential benefit. Sometimes you have a three, some have a four or five, it's really up to our discretion. But going back to the first point about not, manufacturers not going to the town, or not being used, frankly, we have been in a position to use it, it hasn't been promoted, so I don't think, other than utilizing existing language, in terms of how it would be used and promoted, it's, it's not something else that we can really compare it to.
What's the, what's the average lifespan of a restaurant in Milford?
You know, I don't know, I know many businesses don't make it after the first year, it's probably, without a doubt, the most challenging of industries. We've seen turnover throughout the town, but I don't, I've never done an assessment of the average lifespan of a restaurant in Milford.
So are you saying it's unlikely to be, for the most part, beyond three years for a restaurant, and we wouldn't have to keep our full tax benefit on business?
No, because the real property is there, so it's taxable, the owner's going to be taxed, even if the restaurateur fails. That's why we structure it this way, because it's based on new tax revenue. So we would, so they'll be protected, they'd have to meet the requirements in the building if it's built, and it would be taxed, just as any, they get building in town.
No problem.
Thanks, Pete.
I was just going to say, I think a lot of, I tell councilmen, statements about making sure this is a binding agreement, that it has to keep doing, as that was said, I think that's all for, now attorney to come up with a working document that I think could be advantageous on the business kind of behalf, but also be very protective of the town and air rights, so to speak, as I can see Ray in the back of the document, and I've written that out for us.
Sample?
Well, I can do a sample, but you have to understand, the way, this one size doesn't fit all, and that's...
Right.
So I can do not, where, what I would suggest, though, with any such agreement, that may be...
Thank you, Mayor. To echo a little bit about what Pete was asking for, from what I have heard, in the seventies, tax burden was about seventy percent commercial, thirty percent residential. Is that somewhat accurate, right? This is what I've heard from the seventies.
You can remember that, yeah, but we have to have...
You were a kid then, I know.
So you were probably in eighth grade or something.
So, obviously, we had fully running factories and a much smaller population. I've always been an advocate for a very aggressive, aggressive tax abatement scenario, as we're proposing here. I still think, I'd like to digest this and work on this, but I think it's definitely a tool that we need. We have to overcome some of the stigma that the state of Connecticut has for not attracting business, and try to attract it in this corridor. As the CERC report said to us years ago, when I first joined the EDC, you know, our, the greatest advantages we had, no matter what the rest of the state is doing, is our proximity to New York City. We are directly right up the corridor to Western Connecticut and Eastern New York. We have to do something to attract real business here. And what I would say to a lot of folks that are saying, you know, I don't get that benefit if I put a half a million dollars into my house, we are trying to create jobs here, and we're trying to create incentives for people to make improvements to existing properties, grow those properties, which are going to cause not only local jobs to do those improvements, but a long-lasting, as you've indicated, more lasting economic impact. So as, as we would all like to see, obviously, this document is a work in progress, but this is a positive sign here, especially if we can promote this and get it out, and try to really just reach out to businesses and drag them from New Milford, we have to do something. We have to tip the tides back from the eighty-twenty, and if we can get to seventy-five, twenty-five, I think that would be a huge win for the town over the next five years, and hopefully eventually a little bit of a lesser burden on the taxpayer. But in order for us to attract anybody, we have to have incentives, it's just, it's part of the game right now, and it's going to be that way across this country for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we can do one more. Frank?
Just one, but when a business comes into town, there's an awful lot, and you can't do, you can't do this, you can't do that, so they have a negative, it's hard to get a positive attitude when you're going through land use boards and building boards, to get a positive attitude, that New Milford wants you. This is a tool that we could use, that says, we do want you, and we're willing to sacrifice some taxes in order to get you. I think it's a very good instrument to be able to offset those negative feelings.
Well, again, we couldn't on because we have to have it... Well, again, we put it on because we have had it going in for a while, and so now you guys could think about it and get back to me with some questions or suggestions and things like that. We'll put it on again and let you look at it and see what works best for the town. And Randy is going to do a outline or a template or a summary of an example of the kinds of things he would hope you would look for if you were considering anybody's application. And we don't have any other homework today. If you think of anything, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
You know what? Luis, you have your homework ready.
Yes.
Some of the samples from the other communities, if you could send them to my office, we'll send it out to the council.
Okay.
Give you an idea what those communities offer.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item eleven is the finance department with regard to an update with the UNIS and a request for supplemental appropriation to fund the human resources payroll component for the UNIS project.
Who do you think, as Mayor said, I'm asking for forty-five thousand dollars appropriation from the contingency account to go into the finance capital account for the UNIS project. These monies will be used for extra days to get us through the HR payroll phase of the UNIS project. I spoke to the board of ed and asked them for additional support for this, which Jay was receptive to. Right now, we are on target for July one financials. I pushed out all of the training scheduled to the department heads, in which they are getting back to me, they're filling out their slots, and I hope to get them back by the end of this week. But, I mean, really, the meat and potatoes of this whole discussion is the appropriation.
So with regard to the conversation on UNIS a few months ago, when the council was discussing additional help, this is the training for the HR payroll component, and we are supposed to, with this particular training, we would be going live at the end of the year in time for the one January for HR and payroll, which is quite huge.
And the...
The additional training, and then right now, we have enough time in our account, and we're going to have the training for the UNIS software, shoot, just said a brain cramp, for our, for our financial side by one July. So, Katie?
Sounds good. Up to, so far, to date, have we incurred additional costs over the original?
No, no.
So everything's been within the bucket that we started with?
Yes.
This is what we knew was going to come along for HR?
Yeah.
So you don't have any reason to think that this won't follow that same path and be held to time and money?
I asked them for assurances, and while they would not give me assurances, they said, well, if this happens, if I may.
But what's your sense?
Well, included in, in these funds and these expenditures is the, the fact that UNIS will be building all the HR payroll tables, so it won't be the town. So they're the ones with the expertise to do that, so. With that in mind, I, I'm confident that it's going to be right on track.
And you have tied everything up, you have all the history up, feeling really good. Jay, did you want to give an update on board of ed?
Well, we're, we are starting our training next week with our staff, so all of our secretarial staff will be trained next week. That's great. So we've got things in place. We're very confident we'll be ready for July one. The HR side is a huge job. We do it would be. It's incredible. Payrolls, excuse me, payroll's complicated, and with all the union groups we have and all the different things, it's very complicated, and we want to make sure we're doing it right. And I think that's why I want to have some additional support from UNIS to make sure, the one thing we got to do is pay people correctly, so anything else that we do. So I think this makes a lot of sense for us to get this extra support, and we're confident we'll be ready to go on July, January one for payroll.
Other questions? Deb?
For the training, your staff has not received training yet for the financial components.
Well, no, only, well, our main office staff, our staff, you know, main staff have done training, but this is for all the secretaries, you know, administrative staff, the principals and so on, that will be doing.
Okay. I mean, I was privileged to be part of the conversations with the UNIS and yourself, so one of the things that I was speaking with them about, and I hope that they deliver, is more targeted training materials as well, little helper guides.
Yep.
And even on-demand training videos. Did they ever deliver on any of that?
A little bit of both. Some, you know, they tend to say click on the help menu, you know, and sometimes the help menu is great, sometimes it's not. But we have written instructions, and I told Greg, because we're a little bit ahead of them in terms of when the training's going to take place, but we're going to share with them everything we put together, and same with the town with us, with things that they're doing. So they did help us write a bunch of the, a bunch of the directions as well. The one trade, one of the things that's happened that's been very good, as we've said, is we've got a designated trainer that we've been working with for the last seven, eight months now, I guess, and that's made a huge difference. And he's come across with anything we ask, he's put together when we, when we needed it, so that's been very good.
Do you record any of the training sessions?
Well, we haven't done any training. We're start, well, the other, mostly other training's been one-on-one with our, like with my AP person or with our, you know, so we haven't done that. But for the training next week, you had mentioned that before, I'll see if we can do that.
Yeah, either that or we had little videos and guests, or just snippets of, oh, I forgot how to do this, and watch a video. I know all staff can't be there all the time, it's very useful, you just have to...
And we're doing, we're doing, they're putting together a notebook of all the training, of all the data, you know, all the information, instructions, all that kind of thing, so, you know, I think that'll be helpful, but, you know.
Maybe we can get that guy that sets up for the VOE meetings to put a camera up in the classroom and catch...
And we're going to do our training up at the central office in that room up there, and so we'll see what we can do.
You think that's a really...
Depends on what you view. To provide this, too, whether it be the burden of town, I think it's the burden of the vendor.
Yeah, well, the town is going to use UNIS to do the training. We decided to do it ourselves, but, you know, I, I, you know, so that's...
We should video both.
Yep.
But they should provide some more, and that's my concern. They've been less than useful.
Well, let's ask, let's ask, and you know how they look forward to our Friday morning meeting, which I attend so that these guys can smile. And I think that asking for the video, asking them the video would be really supportive.
Anybody's cell phone can take a video, so it doesn't take much.
I don't want to give them that secret.
And we're fully confident in the conversions that were done for the three years previous? We validated all the others.
We tied out two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. We just loaded the budget for two thousand fifteen, the year we're currently in. Obviously, we won't be able to close that until after the audit. The budget just passed, so we're looking at loading two thousand sixteen, so.
Now, are you finding that now that you're getting more confident in the tools, so that you're able to load these rather than having a supporter of the UNIS for those?
Kendrick is loading and, you know, doing all the uploading now, and we seem to be having less problems. Their conversion team was...
Awful.
Yeah.
Still awful. It had, what, six, eight weeks turnaround?
And it would come back incorrect.
Yeah.
So we're not using that.
And did we ever get any credits with the vendor for all the time wasted on these conversions? Because that was a significant burden of the town, thanks.
A few months ago, and we also got credit for someone that came too early to train and shouldn't be training what they were trying to train until after we're applied, which was for Kendrick to be able to make special adjustments or run special reports in case, you know, you're running a report that's a little unusual than what you normally would want. So we did get credit for that.
And are they going to provide support after they go back to the finance, so that if Kendrick runs into a problem of something that wasn't retained or wasn't addressed during the training sessions, he has that support?
Yes.
And that's not an additional cost?
Well, I haven't seen that being an additional cost. For the last two and a half months, weekly, if not daily, but weekly when I'm there, Greg's asked them for budget updates, and now we've asked them for an hourly accounting, because we found out that some of the time when they would call and ask for additional help, they're computing it hourly as an assistant on the phone.
Now that wasn't contracted?
Well...
I don't remember that they applied on contact.
They were applying that to our daily training, like billable attorney hours.
So, there's also support they have that we, I, you know, well, Greg and I, I've seen UNIS in our previous lives, right? So you can, you know, once we get things up and running, support is part of the deal, and we pay that for that support, so there's no cost in addition. You can call as many times as you want to try to, you know, whether it's you have difficulty running a particular program, or you're, you know...
I would say more on the Kendrick side, where you would have more specific targeted issues, the user side. If they, that's great, but...
Given the questions we've asked them, I think in the last couple of, I don't think they're going to be questioning us.
I don't think they'll say no.
Additional time regarding what's happening.
Really, once it's up and running, I don't see Kendrick having a really large role in, you know...
Well, if you have a report that you need built, I'm sure he's going to be there to help support you to do so, so.
He's sent to both sides all along.
So, thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You can tell Beth her field. It's always good to have somebody like that, so we should invite her in. If you're ever here on Friday morning, again, you're not in New York, but any other questions for these guys?
Motion to do this.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item twelve is a one hundred dollar donation for Gallery Twenty-Five from the Rotary Club.
For who?
Second.
How nice is that? Make sure they have a nice big thank you.
Just add in, so you have it on the record, the reason that this, it says the Rotary Club, this is because one of our 2015 Community Service Award recipients, Diane DeGreal, selected Gallery Twenty-Five for her hundred dollar donation.
Ray Crawford chose the movie Warrior.
Yes. That was a wonderful ceremony, too, so thank you.
Hey, you're in twenty fifty, and Frank's in twenty fifty, and there was been a hundred?
Right after you.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item thirteen is a discussion and possible action on a request to accept a thousand dollar donation from Moose Pellegrini for the restoration of the Moreton Bridge. And I will tell you that I went out last week and met with Mr. Moose in front of the bridge on the Route Seven side. Norm Cummings came out and took a bunch of photos, and he's gonna, he may have already written an article on...
The old man that lives over there is going to be very happy to stand.
Oh, nice.
Otherwise, he still wants one of those plaques.
And just a reminder to everybody, if you know someone that wants to donate, remember to put the town of New Milford on the check, and then in the memo portion, the old Boardman Bridge, because the bridge doesn't have its own account, checking account. It has its own line in our town account. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And I think Moose Pellegrini, if I'm remembering correctly, is going to challenge the rest of the businesses in the community to match, right? So, a little inside info. Item thirteen B is discussion and possible action on the attached resolution authorizing the mayor, Pete, to read that.
Read this.
Break it. Or Joe?
Joe.
Yeah.
Here we move that we authorize Mayor Patrick Patricia Murphy to execute an assistance agreement in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development and Center for Expansion and Management.
Is the verdict?
As per the wording.
Is, can we say that, that is attached to the wording, that's correct?
Absolutely.
Authorizing the...
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll have discussion.
Go ahead. Frank?
I'm just, the four hundred thousand dollar from the state, what's the match?
Four ninety-eight, two fifty-three, no match.
No.
So they're, they're putting a hundred percent in the bill?
There, it's a grant, so four hundred ninety-eight thousand, so whatever we...
Well, we don't know how much it's going to cost.
No, we had an estimate that this would be within the realm.
And it's not, we would have to...
Well, we didn't have the money to design it before anyway, and that, this is also for design bill.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
We didn't vote on this?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. I just, yes, I was... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?